Meeting called to order. Councilmember Baz Anderson is absent. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As comply with the open public meetings app, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. Daniel knows us forward to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 16th, 2025, and post on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now onto a proclamation for Prevention of Child Abuse Month.
Okay, let's go.
Is she here?
Is she here?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a proclamation. Whereas children are our nation's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of Asbury Park, and whereas positive childhood experiences, like loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships, can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences, to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects through an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family. Whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community in the United States, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas children who live in families with access to concrete economic and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. And whereas prevention is possible because of the partnerships created between Prevent Child Abuse New Jersey, families, prevention advocates, child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and local, state, and national governments. And whereas we acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling and sharing, center the needs of families, break down bias and barriers, and inspire action from expected and unexpected partners of prevention. And whereas we are committed to advancing equitable, responsive, and effective systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving. And whereas we recognize the need to prioritize kids and invest in more prevention initiatives, like home visiting and family strengthening policies, economic supports, and community-based child abuse prevention programs at the national, state, and local levels. Note therefore, be it resolved there or in the Asbury Park City Council due hereby proclaim April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Asbury Park, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by building a narrative of hope for children and families through collaboration and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention.
Alex and I are here from the Coalition of Asbury Park, and we're a non-denominational, non-political organization. If anyone wants to join, we're meeting tonight at the Asbury Park. We're very open to anyone that wants to join us. We are here to promote the health, the wealth, the promotion of the children of Asbury Park. Our booklets are for sale on our website. We have 58 restaurants that the coupon booklet promotes. They're $30 for one booklet, $50 for two. Every single dollar that we raise goes back into the community of only Asbury Park and supports just the children of Asbury Park. We have scholarships. We have the Beach Box on Second Avenue. We do community events. We do the Pine Street Play on Friday night. Play on Pine on Friday nights, lots of other things. But go onto our website and see what we do for the children of Asbury Park. So thank you for this publication. Could you just take a picture of us? That would be great.
Yeah, come on in the middle.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on special event applications from Recreation Director Leisha Floyd.
Does that follow the one? No. Okay. Why is it all those colors? I think it's just like the standby screen.
Yeah, it's just a screensaver.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are eight applications before you this evening. Two of them are new. That would be the Solstice Safety and Wellness Paddo, as well as a request for the Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month through their press conference on Fifth Avenue, Boardwalk. Are there any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Leisha.
Thank you, Leisha. We are now on to, sorry, we are now on to matters from the City Council. Councilmember Chapman?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes, on Sunday, what is Sunday, State? Sunday, March 31st, the Springwood Avenue Heritage Walk is going to be launching, and everyone is invited to come to 1201 Springwood Avenue for an afternoon with music, door prizes, and raffles, and also the initial tour. So please come out. It's from 2:00 to 4:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
So just a reminder, Garden State Film Festival takes place this weekend, so go on their website and check out what films. And Sylvia asked me to just mention the UEZ is putting, well, the city is putting on a outreach for local businesses. So if anyone here is a local business, we are looking for feedback for our five-year plan for UEZ spending. The reason why this is really important is the city makes proposals to the UEZ Board run by the state, and the state says yes or no. And so if we have an idea of what businesses need to continue to function or survive maybe during hard months like the winter, it would be helpful. So if you could reach out to Sylvia, Sylvia, if you are a local business in the audience.
Thank you. Mayor Moore?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to hand it over to the city's waterfront redevelopment attorney, Joe Marazidi, regarding the Boardwalk Preservation Fund Grant.
Yes, just so everybody knows, Mr. Marazidi is a lawyer for the city as far as the beachfront redevelopment. And everybody knows, last year, the city got $7 million, and Madison Marquette got $13 million, total of $20 million. And since then, we've been trying to negotiate a fair and equitable deal where the first priority of ours that was in the MOU we put out with Madison Marquette was to try to get the Paramount open as soon as possible. So we've made some great headway in the last two weeks, so I'm going to turn over Mr. Marazidi now.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll stand here so everybody can hear me. I don't think I need the microphone, but if you can hear me, raise your hand, and I'll get it. I have good news. Thanks to the pronouncement by the mayor that we had to get this done by April 1st, we made it. And because of that, I think we got where we needed to get. So what we have on the agenda tonight is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Madison Asbury Retail, which will begin the process of bringing the camera theater to a structurally sound and watertight condition. That will happen in two phases, using the funding from the Boardwalk Preservation Fund that had been set up by legislation about a year ago. The city got an award of $20 million. $7 million of that has been allocated by the city for the Boardwalk improvements. $13 million for the work on Paramount Theater. We've spent a little deal of time at the negotiating table with Madison Asbury Retail, or M-A-R, to specify exactly what's going to be done with that money. So the way the agreement works, in Phase 1, there will be a 90-day period for two highly reputable firms to undertake an examination of the building, the exterior of the building. One of them is Michael Graves. It's a firm from Princeton with a global reputation in architecture and historic preservation. The other firm is from Wayne, New Jersey, March Consulting and Contracting. And together, they will be examining the building. March will be pulling apart some of the bricks to look at the undersurface. They will be examining the leaks in the building to determine what needs to be done to make it watertight and structurally sound. As a result of that process, construction documents will be prepared, which will become the elements of Phase 2 of the arrangement. This is a historic site. There is an easement, a historic site easement, with the State Office of Historic Preservation. So there will be coordination throughout this process over the 90-day period with SHPO, as it's called. And the work will be done and reimbursed to Madison Asbury Retail on the basis of inspections, active work in progress, reimbursement contract. There will be, as I said, a 90-day period to finish this. We will then negotiate an amendment to this agreement to describe Phase 2. All of the work, other than the grant, must be completed not later than December, not later than December 2026, because the money has come from the federal government under the American Rescue Act that was adopted in the prior administration to deal with the adverse effects of COVID. Those are strict limits on the time period to use this funding, and the assurances that we've had are that we can get it done. There are a lot of details in the agreement. There will be a project labor agreement as part of this, prevailing wages as part of the requirements of the program. And the details of the March and the Graves proposals, which are attached to the document, have been thoroughly negotiated, worked out with the incredible help of Jane Harzold and Fran Mullin of T&amp;M Engineers. And so we present to you tonight a document that we feel is very tight, so we'll get the first phase going so that we can get into the second phase and get everything done on the exterior by the end of next year.
Thank you.
We now have a presentation by APW Redevelopment LLC and Asbury Partners LLC for proposed redevelopment at Block 3801, Lot 1.02, 320 Asbury Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Jennifer Phillips-Smith. I'm an attorney with Gibbons PC. And I am here tonight on behalf of APW Redevelopment, which is an affiliate of the master developer, Asbury Partners. We are here tonight to present a proposed development for Block 3801, which is the large triangular piece of property at the intersection of Asbury Ave. and Cookman Avenue. We were here about two years ago with a proposal for this site. At that time, we had a proposal for a six-story building with 156 rental residential units. The redevelopers reevaluated what's best for this lot, and ultimately is putting forth a proposal that is less dense and has fewer overall stories, and has taken one larger building and broken it down into three smaller buildings. You'll hear tonight that the three buildings proposed include a five-story building on Asbury Ave., which will be condo units, a four-story townhouse string on Cookman, and then a building that tapers down to three stories and even further at the corner, right at the tip of the triangle. We have four presenters this evening. We will start with our planner, who will orient everyone to the location here and the zoning requirements. We'll then move on to our engineer, who will talk a bit about some of the constraints we had here, particularly as to meeting flood hazard requirements. And then we have two different architects. We have an architect that will talk about the condo building and townhouse building, and then one that will talk about the mixed-use building proposed for the tip of the triangle. So we'll start with John Barry, our planner. So just give us an overview of the location of the property and the zoning requirements.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you. John Barry with the firm Hired, Grown Associates. I'm a professional planner in New Jersey, and I've been before everyone here on several projects in the past. I'm happy to be back again. Just go through.
Go ahead.
All right. So just to orient everyone, we set this aerial up so that it mirrors how the redevelopment plan orients the waterfront. So obviously, the beach and the ocean are at the bottom of the screen. The property that we're looking at this evening is a triangle at the intersection of Cookman and Asbury Avenues. So you can see it there, Block 3801, Lot 1.02. And we have some of the development that's taken place recently around the property that you can see in the aerial image here with the Cove and Wesley Grove and some of the other projects that we'll take a closer look at in a moment. So the location of the property now oriented so that north is up, the ocean is on our right, and Wesley Lake at our south, bottom-of-the-screen location. We have some images of the surroundings of the property. We have Cookman Avenue with the bottom, Asbury Avenue at the top, forming that triangle point. The Seaview Senior Tower is across Asbury Avenue to the north of the property. We have the VIVE Development at the corner of Kingsley and Asbury Avenues. Then we have Wesley Grove, the four-story buildings, and then behind them, the townhouse part of the project across Cookman Avenue to the south. And then the more recently constructed Cove Townhouse Development to the west budding the property. And here are some images of those developments. As I described, you can see the scale, and we'll talk a little bit more about the relative size of the project on the next slide. You can see the four stories at Wesley Grove and at the VIVE and Cove buildings. They're all a similar height. And then the little bit older, set back a little further, Philip Seaview Towers, a 12-story building. So to get into what we're proposing, the project will consist of three separate buildings that'll be in two phases on two separate lots that'll then be interconnected. The design professionals will get into more details about the specifics, but overlaid here on the aerial image, you can see the relative orientation of the buildings. The top-left part of the site along Asbury Avenue will have a five-story multifamily building that's roughly across from the Seaview Tower. And the redevelopment plan permits up to eight stories of height in that area. Moving to the right at the pencil point, this would be actually the second phase of the project is a three-story mixed-use building that tapers toward the point of the intersection. And you'll see how the architecture is intended to work with the shape of the lot here. So that's relatively opposite the VIVE. Again, eight stories would be permitted up to that corner part of the lot. We're proposing a three-story building there that's less than the height of the VIVE across the street. And then moving down Cookman, we have a block of townhouses that are the three-and-a-half or four-story model that are similar in scale to the Cove buildings that are right next door, and no taller than the Wesley Grove building that's across the street. So that gives a sense of the scale. The project will include a proposed subdivision that'll have two conforming lots in the redevelopment plan standards. All the height conforms and is well below what's permitted for most of the block. And the uses with the various different residential types, some condos, some townhouses, and also a commercial component on the ground floor of the building at the point that's mostly oriented toward Cookman Avenue are all permitted under the redevelopment plan. So we also will have compliant parking, as you'll hear more about, and a variety of other improvements that are generally consistent in all important ways with the redevelopment plan. So I think that covers my part. Anything else?
It does.
Isn't that right?
So we'll move on to our civil engineering. Just get an overall description of the layout of the buildings, and then also what constraints we had that led to this design.
Good evening. My name is Lena Bolorda Barone. I'm a senior project manager with French and Perillo Associates, and I'm the project engineer for this project. So just to orient you again, you see Cookman Avenue on the bottom of the page, Asbury Avenue up on top. This is one of our plans that was submitted to the council. And you see Building 1, which is the building on the top left-hand side. That would be the five-story condominium building containing 50 residential units. Building 2, to the right of it, is the mixed-use building, which is a three-story building with commercial on the first floor and eight residential units above. And Building 3 is a string of nine townhome buildings. Those are four-story buildings, and again, they're just individual townhomes. We put a lot of thought in the site design because of the unique shape, of the triangular shape and the nature of this development. This took some creativity. We also had to address the unique challenges of this particular site, being that it's so close to Wesley Lake. This site is partially located in a flood plain or a flood hazard area. The flood hazard elevation is, the NJDP considers that one foot above the FEMA elevation. So the elevation we had to address is elevation 11. One of the reasons that we propose the top-left-hand entrance to the northwest at that location is because that is the highest elevation of the site and allows us to meet the NJDP Dry Access Rule, meaning that the driveway is at the highest elevation. And even in a flood condition, there would be no more than 12 inches of water in that driveway. Another reason that we lined up the driveways where we haven't is to allow for the intersections for vehicular and driver safety, as well as to not have any headlights facing residential buildings. In this layout, we had also considered the massing of the buildings and the proximity to adjacent developments, so we sought to maximize view sheds and openness to adjacent developments. This layout also maintains all of the existing on-street parking, so there will be no loss of parking spaces. We are providing the required parking for this development. In fact, 101 parking spaces are required. This project will provide 125 parking spaces within the site. The project will be constructed in two phases. Buildings 1 and 3 will be constructed first, and then Building 2, which is part of the subdivided lot.
And that will allow the developer to actually stage at the points rather than staging in the street or surrounding areas, correct?
That's correct. Within the site, we are proposing EV parking spaces. As you can see, those are on the westerly portion. There will be 14 surface parking spaces with EV that are EV make-ready. And then the buildings will also have EV ready or chargers within the buildings, which I will let the architects address as they do their presentation. We presented this project to the TRC, and we had gotten some comments, which we sought to address and have created the updated plans that you see in front of you. One of the requests was to flip the retail entrances that we originally proposed on Asbury Avenue. We now flipped them to Cookman and created a series of stairs and ramps to provide ADA-accessible access to those doors. We were also tasked to look for opportunities to provide rain gardens instead of only porous pavement. As you can see on the bottom corner there, on the bottom left, we are now proposing a rain garden in addition to the porous pavement and infiltration basins throughout the site. There was also a request to delineate where each one of the driveways starts and stops for the townhome buildings. So we are showing the delineation that will be on the concrete. We will be providing a garage maneuverability plan. As those designs get further developed, that will be part of our application packet to the planning board. And I talked about the EV parking spaces. And to address the cross-access easements, so we are going to propose cross utility easements as well as access easements for the two lots. And we have also added the location of the mailbox for the townhome building, which is right near the intersection of St. James and Cookman, right about there. And we will be working, we clarified that the landscaping is mostly native, but we will be working very closely with your landscape architect to ensure that it is to their satisfaction.
Thank you. So I'd like to move now to get into the architecture, and we'll start with the two buildings that are entirely residential. So I'd ask Michael to introduce himself and walk us through.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Lawson. I am a principal at Manilowasco Architects and Planners, and I'm here to present to you two of the buildings that are on the site. So as our attorney just stated, these are two residential buildings, one being a multifamily building, five stories, and the other one being a four-story townhouse project. This is, again, the site plan. As I said, we'll be presenting to this building here, that's on Asbury Avenue, and then the townhouse building located on Cookman. To take us right into the building floor plans here, this building is a 50-unit building. It has a series of ones and two-bedroom units, condo units. It is four stories of wood frame construction over one story of podium. In the podium is located the parking garage. As we have stated, and as our civil engineer has stated, the podium level and the parking is located above flood elevation, and that requires us to have storm vents on the base of the building. Those things can be seen on the elevations as we get to them as well. In the garage portion of the building, we have a series of parking spaces, some being tandem, and we have lobby, utility, and bike storage. As you get to the upper levels of the building, we have a range of different units that do have den units, as well as balconies in every single unit, focused on the views towards the ocean and towards the lake. As we go up to the fourth and fifth story, these stack, but they do have more two bedrooms on these. We do have den units in this product as well, which we believe will be very marketable. On the roof here, we have a rooftop amenity that faces towards the ocean. That rooftop amenity has areas for barbecue grilling, outdoor lounging, a lawn area. One of the comments that we got in the TRC was where we are proposing to locate the mechanical units. We are proposing to locate them at the center of the building, so they will be screened from view by the parapet walls, as well as screened and buffered from the amenity deck that we're proposing on the roof. That will be a layer of either landscaping or screening around those mechanical units. This is an elevation from Asbury Avenue. As you can see, we have a contemporary shore type of architecture that we believe is very in line with the neighborhood and enassing with the overall Asbury Park downtown area. Along Asbury Avenue, we have our main entrance that you can see here on the elevation that has a ramp and stairs leading to it, as well as a portico that we believe accentuates where the entry is located. where the entry is located. In terms of the materials on the building, we have a beige style brick on the base with grills into the parking garage. And then we transition to a series of board and battened fiber cement, as well as shingle fiber cement on the upper stories with large windows and balconies. The aesthetic and the colors are compatible, and they work very well with the other adjacent properties as well. Now we'll take you to the townhouses that are located on Cookman. Townhouses here are front-loaded with the parking garages located in the rear of them, so you do not have any garages actually fronting onto any right-of-ways. On the Cookman Avenue side, we do have stoops leading to the front doors. On the ground floor, we have the parking garage in the rear, as I just stated, and then a flex space. And then the main living area is actually located on the second floor. This includes a kitchen, a living room, and a dining room. On the next floor, we have the third floor, which is our main bedroom level. It has three bedrooms. We have updated the plans to show the connection to the loft that is located on the fourth floor. The loft includes an outdoor area that will have very picture-expused views towards the ocean and towards the lake. The mechanical units are located on the rear of that side away from the right-of-way, so that it's to be hidden from view from the street. This is an image and perspective from Cookman Avenue, showing how we are stepping the building as well. We have three stories, and then we step back for that fourth story, which we believe creates a really fantastic massing. We are compatible with the materials that we propose in the five-story condominium building. Again, we have a light beige brick at the base. We have then a fiber cement panel, as well as fiber cement lapped siding in a range of blues, and we have some wood paneling as well to add some softness and Vichy vibe to the overall aesthetic. So I'll take you back to this image really quickly. In terms of overall height of this building, we are proposing that the five-story building be 59 feet from grade to roof structure. That's about 66 feet if you include the appurtenances and rooftop amenity bulkheads that are required to access the rooftop deck. For the townhouse development, that will be 43 feet in total from grade to roof structure, and that is very compatible to the vibe across the street, almost identically, actually. There were just a few other points that we wanted to illustrate. For the EV spaces, we will have all the EV required spaces of 15%, as the civil engineer said, exterior of the building. However, there will be infrastructure and conduit within the buildings in both the townhouses and the multifamily building to have further expansion of the EV if the tenant so wishes to have them. There was a few comments from the TRC that I'll just highlight. We are providing dark sky compliant lights on the roof deck. They will be shining down, not up. We did consider flipping the locations of the dining room and living room, however, we felt that the overall product was good as it was and offered the benefit of providing a flexibility for the future homeowners. We did correct the stairs. That was a comment as well. We will providing, for the lights in the garages, so for the garage lights, we will be shielding them from the upper and lower-level brick bands, plus providing the mesh within the window frames to dull the lights coming from the inside for public safety. I think that that was the main items that the TRC had looked at with here, and we did provide testimony to them as well.
And just to clarify, all of the units, both the townhomes and the multifamily building, they're all being offered for sale, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right. So with that, I would like to ask our final architect to come up and talk about the mixed-use building that's proposed for the point of the triangle. Frank, if you would reintroduce yourself.
Good evening, Council. Frank Murnavini, Principal at MBMK Architecture. Pardon my voice tonight. We are responsible for the design of the easternmost portion of the site, the, what we're calling the mixed-use building. So this first image is a view looking west from Asbury Avenue, very near to the intersection of Cookman Avenue. The ground floor, you can see a main stair entering it. The ground floor has 5,100 square feet of retail space, and the other two floors, meeting floors 2 and 3, both have residential uses for a total of eight residential units. Of those eight units, there's a range between 2,000 square feet and 3,200 square feet in terms of their size. Very important here, I think, and it's something I think was well-received at the TRC, the shape of the site really drove the architecture, meaning there's nothing orthogonal about our portion of the site where the point is. So that lent itself better to a more contemporary building than you would more typically see. And as I go through the images, you'll understand that a bit more. Also, very important to remember that at this portion of the site, we are permitted, as per the redevelopment plan, eight stories, and we're proposing three stories at 39 feet above approximate sidewalk. So, Michael, next one? Our floor plans, starting on the bottom left, we've got, at the left portion of the plan, we've got 16 parking spaces for those eight units. Two of them will be, will have charging stations, EV charging stations. The remaining 14 will be make-ready, meaning they've got the infrastructure for any of the residents to provide their own if they wanted to. Pouring about with that same plan, you can see the configuration of the retail space, and back to what I mentioned before, the, some of the constraints we had with the triangle, but I think we've resolved it very well. The retail space is accessed from either side, but we have main entries of Cookman, possible entries depending on how the actual planning board looks at it along Asbury, but it is all raised on what is in effect a sidewalk platform, because we are now, as you've heard already, within the floodplain, floodhazard area, that the entries have to be raised approximately three feet in this case. So we've got the municipal sidewalk and then a raised platform, which some of my renderings will do a better job telling. The other two-
Just pausing on the commercial for, just for one moment.
Yes.
So that could be one tenant, or that could be multiple tenants, correct?
Correct. It's designed for some flexibility. We've got multiple door entries, so it could be one large tenant. It could be two or three.
And I know we're labeling as retail, but it could be any commercial.
Any commercial use as approved within the redevelopment plan, a restaurant, for example.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt. Continue.
No, fine. Floors 2 and 3, which is the top left and bottom right, show our residential unit layouts. There was, I won't say it's difficult, but certainly challenging to design apartments on a site that's got this point, but I think they all worked out very well. Mixture of, combination of three to four bedroom units, given the sizes. Each of the units have outdoor space. It'll be more understandable as they get further into the renderings. And we're not proposing at this point for the roof to have any use other than for mechanicals, so there's no roof decks at this point. All of the apartments have their own balconies off of the actual units themselves. Next one, Michael? So these are views from both Asbury Avenue and Cookman Avenue, again, showing the long linear nature of the building. And from some perspective, that's almost nautical, but that is a result of the dimensions of the building, the dimensions of the site. So along Asbury, it's, the actual building is 200 feet in length. Next one, please. Just some of the other views, again, because we're on that triangle, there are multiple facades. A6. And next one, Michael? This is our material board, material palette, a view looking at the Asbury Avenue elevation. It's a very simple palette, given the style of architecture, so we're using a brick at the ground floor. Brick is often connected to a retail space, so that's what we've done here. The base of the building, which I had mentioned, is raised, is also brick, so in essence, the building's out of brick print. And then there are horizontal, I see three horizontal bands that are made from, will be made from, and designed to be used with fiber cement panels in white. All of the infill is also fiber cement panel, but it's a simulated wood product. So all of these products, we think, work well with the kind of contemporary nature of the building, and they're also long-lasting and durable, given the conditions we've got here in Asbury Park. And these are just some other views. Top left is, as I mentioned, where the intersection of Asbury Avenue and Cookman Avenue is, so that's the main entry to the retail space. There are, of course, ADA required ramps on both sides and both Cookman and On Asbury, as well as additional stairs. And then there's some other views to try and give you a flavor of the architecture. And that's really it.
And the nature of the stairs there that step up to the entrances, that's dictated by the floodhazard requirements, correct?
Yeah, so that height you see is because the building has to be raised up, given our location within the floodhazard area, as described by Lena, our civil engineer. In that case, in particular, in that rendering number one, it's more of a monumental stair. So you can, of course, access the retail space from there, but you can access it also along either Asbury or Cookman.
Okay. So that concludes the direct presentation that we have tonight, but everyone, of course, is here to answer questions, should you or the public have any.
I have some questions. So looking at this line here, it's a lot of impervious cover on this lot. Where's the landscaping, other than the trees along the curb line? Where's the landscaping?
The building is set back from the property line, but that's, what that space is used for is the raised platform, let's call it, for access into retail space. So landscaping, we've got landscaping, as you mentioned, along the street. We could certainly add more landscaping to that small plaza where the monumental stair enters the retail space. We could add some landscaping here to soften it up, if that's something-
I would love to see more landscaping.
Sure.
And the rain garden that you showed on the rendering was very small for, again, for this coverage on this-
Is that your building, Michael?
That would be Lena.
Oh, Lena, yeah. So this-
I can have Lena address the rain garden, if that's better.
Would you, is there any other questions you'd like for the mixed-use building while I'm sitting here, happy to answer?
Landscaping, thank you for the lead silver, by the way. Just, I'm really concerned about, it's a lot of cement. It's a lot of non-landscaping, and I'm not a fan of that. I think that's it. Do you have bicycle storage in any of these units?
Yeah, so on the mixed-use building, we've got quite a bit of area for bicycle storage. We've got spaces within the actual garage itself. Any access off the main lobby, there's also bicycle storage room. So on that particular building, which, of course, I'm more familiar with, there's quite a bit.
So I'm concerned about the size of the rain garden and the lack of landscaping and a lot of cement.
So the rain garden is just one of the components for stormwater management. It only addresses a portion of it. There will be porous pavement, basically the surface parking that you see would be made of porous pavement with storage underneath it, and there would also be a basin under Building 2 as well. So we have a series of stormwater management basins to address stormwater management. And of course, actually, we did make a submission to NJDP for their review. We are proposing 86, roughly 86% of impervious, where we are permitted 90%. So we're slightly below the maximum, and as you see on our landscape plan, we are, obviously, we're going to be providing street trees and wherever we have this, so on the west side, we are providing additional landscaping for further buffering. And surrounding Building 3 and Building 1, we do have, maybe if you can zoom in, Michael, a little bit more, so if you see the vegetation near the building. And we also have a portion of Building 3, before we get to that system of ramps and stairs, we do have some additional landscaping there. So wherever we have the opportunities, we are providing landscaping on roughly 14% of the site.
Okay. I would like to see more landscaping. That's me.
I think we're concerned more incorporates of flag, those are some additional things.
As far as surface landscaping, you would have to start eliminating parking in order to create more at-grade landscaping, correct?
Correct.
So it would be a trade-off.
The access and egress from Cookman Avenue going on to this, it's a very, Cookman Avenue is, one, a very narrow street. Two, it's one of our most traveled streets, and you have access from Asbury Avenue. Why don't you have everything coming in from Asbury? It's much water. So, but we thought that having the flexibility of two access points would be more desirable to give that option to go to either street.
Okay. I don't think the access from Cookman is desirable, but that's my opinion.
So we had originally proposed the main retail access to be on Asbury, and the TRC asked us to move the main retail access to Cookman. So we had originally proposed the main access points on Asbury Avenue, but-
What's the width of the two driveways in and out?
About 24 feet.
24 feet, and is there going to be a mechanical arm, or?
No.
There's nothing mechanical?
Correct.
And both entrances and exits, the one on Asbury and one on Cookman, will be available when the first phase is done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the vegetation, those trees that are on the corner, and they'll all come down on the point by Cookman and Asbury? There's a lot of trees and vegetation there.
Yes.
That vegetation will come down.
Okay, that's all the questions from council, but I'm sure there's going to be some from the public, so if you guys want to stay right there.
Sure.
All right. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time of it for each speaker.
Hey, Mike Sedano, Fourth Avenue. I have two questions about this development. Has there been a traffic study done for this area? Or is it too early to do a traffic study? I don't know. Because if you've got entrances on Cookman, Cookman's pretty busy. The second question I have is, is there any public art planned for this development? Murals, sculpture, beautification? Because all I've seen is gray buildings. Thanks.
Do you want us to answer one by one?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Traffic study. So under the waterfront redevelopment plan, we are not required to do-
I think you need to be louder.
Don't, sorry.
I can't hear a word anybody has said at all.
Well, that is a registered answer.
So as far as the traffic study, under the waterfront redevelopment plan, at the outset, when it was designed, there had been traffic studies done. We are not required to submit updated traffic studies with each project. The initial waterfront redevelopment plan had approved and assumed that there would be 3,124 units. That is not going to happen, as far as that many, so there, no new traffic studies are required with each block.
When was the study done?
Wait a second. You're going to have to get up to the microphone and state your name and answer your questions. You have plenty of time.
And public art?
At the moment, there's no public art proposed, but it's certainly a comment we can discuss and consider.
Thank you.
Nancy Sedano, Fourth Avenue. In keeping with Eileen's statement, have you ever considered, especially on retail, which is only mechanicals on the roof surface, to do a green roof? Or perhaps do trees on roofs or off sides of buildings? There's many examples I could refer you to in both Vancouver and- There's many examples I could refer you to in both Vancouver and Portland and other places we visited that show creativity and originality when it comes to utilizing green on top of buildings with buildings, trees. So there's all sorts of things you could do. You have nothing but sunshine down there. And it would help blanket some of that area that's just going to get hit with sun all summer long. And there's many different ways of doing that. And I would just suggest you look into that because it could help a lot in creating something other than another cement block. And we have a lot of those now.
We do understand that on the multifamily building that we are proposing, we are proposing an amenity rooftop deck that will have some landscaping, low-level landscaping to buffer from some of the other areas of the roof. As well as on the townhouse building, we are proposing private terraces that the tenants might be able to have potted plants or those kinds of things in those outdoor areas.
Thank you.
Constantine Georgiades, 301 Cookman Avenue, Unit 13. I have a question on the sidewalk width and the setback on the Cookman side. Currently, where the cove starts, there's about fifty-four inches between the curb and where the sidewalk starts. And then there's thirteen feet of sidewalk. They're extra-large sidewalks. So there's about seventeen and a half feet of setback. And it goes into, they feed into a much smaller sidewalk. And it's not particularly good for walking, as it gets there for strollers, wheelchairs. So my question is, are you going to match
Yes.
the current sidewalk that's on Cookman that's seventeen and a half feet?
It will be wide to that because that is one of the master plan requirements.
Okay, thank you.
You can see that on the plan.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Myers, 301 Cookman. I have a question on the EV spots that you have outside, on the outside. First of all, are those going to be only for residences? The residents, because how are you going to prevent other people from coming and using the spots for the public? Is there any proposal for that? So that's one of my questions. The second is, as people pull in, I'm the development across, as people pull in, I'm going to get the headlights from all the cars pulling in. What are you anticipating as a buffer? There's also a walkway that runs along there. So you could literally be pulling in and knock people off the walkway if there's not something solid or something. I mean, you are talking Asbury Park, you are talking, you know, I don't trust every driver. So what are you going to do to prevent those cars from hitting the people walking? The headlights and all of that, as well as the use of it by the public? Because there's just a bunch of spots in Asbury. And, what else was I going to ask? Also, just in terms of the parking, I know that you said you're overparked, but you have den units. And we all know that in Asbury Park, a den unit means a bedroom. So I don't think that this project is overparked. I think it's actually underparked because you have den units. And what consideration has been done for the fact that a den unit is no different than a bedroom? And you need parking? So those are all my questions.
Maybe I'll start answering backwards.
Yes.
With the parking. So the redevelopment plan, also as part of the cap requirement that was approved, requires one and a half parking spaces per unit. The number of bedrooms actually does not matter. So we're providing more than that already.
Based on bedrooms, but not based on a den? There's no way that it's not going to be used as a bedroom?
Just to clarify, whether it's a four-bedroom unit or a one-bedroom unit, we're required to have 1.5 spaces.
Okay.
Here, we're providing more than 1.5. But whether it's a den or a bedroom doesn't change the requirement.
So the, between EV parking spaces and the property line is ten feet. And in there, we're proposing, maybe if you want to zoom in, Michael, we're proposing extensive vegetation and landscaping. And I'll make a note here to make sure that we are providing appropriate shrubbery to block the headlights. There's also going to be a curb so that vehicles can pull up and just continue. So there will be definitely a bare landscape buffer in between.
So you're going to have a walkway and then just landscaping and then a car?
There's going to be a walkway, ten feet curb, and then a door.
Any thought to something more solid?
Because we could consider that.
Or something more protective than just a bunch of bushes? And how high is the shrubbery going to be?
It varies. We have some trees, we have some shrubs, and we can look at that detail. But it's going to be sufficient to, you know, to prevent the car. It's not just going to be something that's one foot tall.
Because, again, you have the walkway that runs along there.
Yeah, but the walkway's on the other side, yes.
Correct.
And I think there's actually two walkways there.
There is two walkways.
Right.
Only one is public, the other is internal to the other.
And then the cove one before you actually get to the residential.
Right, our walkway has a fence, a fence. This one won't have one. Or doesn't appear to have one, based on the plan that you have there. So you're saying it's curbed, ten feet, shrubbery?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, the EV, how are you proposing to restrict that, the EV?
The question was whether the EV uses would only be for residents or if they opened to the public, right?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is James Muller, and I am Director of Land Planning and Analysis with Polty.
Okay.
So we are the project purges of the condo building.
Well, then you answered my other question then, okay. Which is, who's purchasing it?
So what we do, we have a management company that will hire a special company that deals with the EV parking space. It'll only be the people who live, they'll get a five to use it. So you will not be able to, if you are the public, come in.
Okay, that's what I was hoping you would say, but I want to make sure. So it's not, so it, I mean, it won't stop people from parking there, obviously.
Well, again, the management company will release it.
But they can't use the EV. But so only residents could actually use the EV? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Just for clarity, we talked about it being two phases. What's been submitted is that the two purely residential buildings would be developed by a subsidiary of Polty. The building at the point is intended to be developed by the master redeveloper entity.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tom Pacico, and I live at the Cove, 600 Hex Street. And my concern is the height of the building as it relates to the height of the Cove. I believe you're five sixty-six feet tall, when you're all said and done. And how does that compare to the height of the Cove?
So in terms of the overall building, the building that's directly adjacent right across from Cookman Avenue is only four stories and forty-three feet. The five-story condo building located off of Asbury, that technically is only fifty-nine feet to the roof structure. The extra bit there is actually for the rooftop apartments. So anything in terms of stair, elevator. So that actual area that goes up to sixty-six feet is actually very much small on the rooftop there. So really, the building goes up to fifty-nine.
And how does that compare to the height of the Cove?
I believe that the Cove is, I don't know, which is- This building, four stories. I don't know exactly how tall that is. But I would say it's probably about a half a story or slightly more than what the Cove is because we are proposing a five-story.
So is there any consideration to the blocking the Cove from, there's quite a few residents that are-
Because we strategically located the height of that building on to Asbury, we don't think that there's an issue there. Also, based on the redevelopment plan, in that area, you're permitted to go eight stories. So we're only proposing five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's like to be heard about this or any other issue, please, now's the time. I've seen nobody making a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now-
Let's take a two-minute break so they can get all their stuff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Good job, Phil.
You guys are-
No questions?
I guess we're all, we're all enjoying it. Better to get us-
There we go. Have a great night.
You too. Appreciate if everybody takes it outside so we can continue with our business.
All right, time to go, everybody.
Bye to the chambers, please.
We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting and regular meeting minutes for the March 12, 2025 meeting. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular items, then said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have Resolutions 2025-154 through 2025-158. Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to individual resolutions, I have Resolution 2025-159, Resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-160, Resolution authorizing revisions to the statutory budget deadlines as per the Local Finance Board Local Finance Notice 2024-20.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-161, Resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-162, Resolution approving change order number seven for the new fire department headquarters.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-163, Resolution authorizing the repairs to fire department ambulance number eighty-three dash sixty.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-164, Resolution authorizing purchase of security upgrades at City Hall.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-165, Resolution authorizing purchase of 2025 seasonal beach badges.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-166, Resolution authorizing the annual renewal of Civic Plus software for Recreation Department and PAL.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-167, Resolution authorizing a contract for over-the-moon for the production of First Friday's Art and Sound Events for 2025 through Community and Cultural Affairs.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-168, Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Asbury Park, authorizing the city of Asbury Park to enter into the Boardwalk Preservation Fund sub-grant agreement with Madison Asbury Retail LLC.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-169, Resolution authorizing professional service contract to Hackensack Meridian Team Health PC for employment exams and physicals.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-170, Resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Alcohol Beverage Control under the COPS and CHOP Summer Shore Initiative 2025.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-171, Resolution authorizing the execution of a deed easement by the city to JCP&L for property known as Block 608, Lot 1, for the installation of electrical facilities for the new firehouse.
Move it. We talked about it in executive-
It's an add-on.
It's a add-on.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-172, Resolution authorizing appointment to the housing authority. The appointment is to fill a vacancy with a term to expire of April 28, 2030.[1726.99]